All right, it is 6:10 PM. We are going to start the meeting. Our healthcare hero is saving lives.
Epic downtime.
And we are parked all the way to Olson Road, so you also had to walk a mile here, so no worries. But we will call the meeting to order. Clerk may have a roll call and an establishment of a quorum.
Cindy Byting?
Here.
Mary Bashaw?
Here.
Barb Stotts?
Here.
Mike Wagner?
Here.
Matt Crowe?
Finally here.
And I'm here as well.
All right, I have proof of posting. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing done, Cindy?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Rolling into our reorganization, 2.1. It's now time for our elected officials to take their oath. So Matt, Angie, Cindy, if you want to gather up front, please. I'm sorry, it's current. Go stand.
I can't just stand.
No.
Right over here.
Look at you.
Half, I mean half.
Oh geez.
And if everybody will raise their right hand, please, and you can all say at the same time. Okay.
I, Angela Wolfe, have been elected or appointed to the Office of Wisconsin Heights School Board, but have not yet entered upon the duties thereof, swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, and will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my abilities. So help me God.
Well done.
We're agreed.
Welcome back, my board. Thank you for your service.
And congratulations, yes.
Congratulations, yes. All right, 2.2 is our election of officers for the 2024 board term. And for each officer, we will be asking three times. So yes, that is normal. I didn't just screw up, okay? So we will start with president. So I will take nominations for president.
I nominate Barb to continue as president.
I second Barb.
Premature second. Sorry, Angie, that's okay.
You're welcome.
I started there.
So did I, see?
Okay, are there any other nominations for president? And a third time, are you sure? There are no other nominations for president? Okay, do I have a second on the motion?
I second Barb.
All right, hearing done, Cindy?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well.
Congratulations.
Thank you. All right, do I have any nominations for vice president?
I nominate Mike Wagner as vice president.
Are there any other nominations for vice president? And a last good third time, are there any other nominations for vice president? Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Hearing done, Cindy?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well.
Congratulations, Mike.
All right, I'll take any nominations for clerk.
I'll nominate Angie to continue as clerk.
Are there any other nominations for clerk? And a third time, are there any other nominations for clerk? All right, do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
All right, hearing done, Cindy?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Thank you, Angie. Oh, I'm sorry, you say your.
Congratulations.
All right, at this time, I'll take nominations for treasurer.
Nominate Mary Beth.
Are there any other nominations for treasurer? And a third time, any other nominations for treasurer? All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
You're jumping, okay. And hearing done, Cindy?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Thank you, Mary Beth.
And congratulations.
All right, thank you, team. Election of officers is complete. Moving on to district business. 3.1, do I have a motion to designate the People's Community Bank, Lake Bridge Bank, and ADM as public depositories for the district?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
I'm just curious why we have three? Is there a reason for three, or is it just the way it is?
ADM is American Depository Management. They kind of handle a lot of our bond payments, so we kind of have to send it then, and then they send it out. So it's just an extra one. And then a lot of districts have two, just acres.
Okay.
Any other questions on that? Hearing done, Cindy?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yep.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. 3.2, designation of our official newspaper publication. Do I have a motion to designate Star News as the newspaper for publication and legal notices?
So moved. Second.
Any questions? Okay, hearing done, Cindy?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. 3.3, our primary legal counsel. I'd like to make an addition to that. Historically, we've used Boardman and Clerk. And this year, Craig's had a good standing relationship with Rennie, Lewis, and Lacy, and we've used their services quite often. And so I'll make a recommendation that we add them in addition to Boardman and Clerk. So the motion will read, do I have a motion to designate Boardman, Clerk, and Rennie, Lewis, and Lacy as primary authorized legal counsel for the district and authorize the administration to obtain other counsel as needed?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
And any questions on that? Okay, hearing done, Cindy?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yep.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. 3.4, action to appoint a CISA II representative. I would like to appoint Dylan Holm. I didn't hear anyone else talking.
No.
Felt like you were going to say another word to him, but I'll second that.
Will faithfully make my drive down to Whitewater.
And you thoroughly dislike the opportunity.
Right.
But grudgingly, yes, you accept. So thank you for taking.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. All right, any other questions or comments? Hearing done, Cindy?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yep.
Angie?
Yes.
Vote yes as well. Just giving you ample time to get, you know, get your word in. You're not going to comment on that. Right, yeah. All right. 4.1, public input. We do have Mel Schmidt online with us, who would like to say something. Mel, if you can hear us, go ahead and speak. Okay, great.
I apologize for not being there person. I plan so far our all-night activities tonight. For those of you who don't know me, I am Mel Schmidt. I teach seventh grade social studies, reading, and language arts. And I am, Mel Schmidt, in such a good way today because today was the seventh grade field trip to the Milwaukee Public Museum. We had a great time. On behalf of the students and staff, thank you for supporting our trip by funding all of the fun we had today. I am proud to share our students represented Wisconsin Heights in a positive manner. They were respectful, took care of the museum, artifacts that we got to look at and hold, cleaned up for ourselves for lunch. They were truly awesome. It was an experience, it is experiences such as this that brings curriculum to life. Watching our students see artifacts and interact with displays related to classroom learning is awesome. I hope that you can view the pictures that I sent in and just know that we are truly grateful for this experience that you funded. So thank you very much.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mel.
Thank you.
It's a great time to highlight those off-campus opportunities. Thank you, Mel. All right, 5.1, do I have a motion to approve the Education Board of Education meeting minutes of April 8, 2024?
So moved. Second.
Any questions? Hearing done, Cindy?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yep.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. 6.1, board president report. I just wanted to take the time to kind of point out the three working norms that we have as a board. We came to consensus on those back in 2018, so I know that's a long time ago. And, you know, it just seemed like a fitting time as we're reorging and entering into this new year with Michelle coming on board and certainly onboarding a bunch of people that it would be good to just go back and recognize the norms that we have established. And so I'll just read them out loud. One, we will ensure a professional environment through active participation and listening. We'll solicit feedback at meetings and make it a point to ask all board members. Sorry, Mary Beth, I get long-winded. We'll develop consensus on items. Everyone has a chance to voice their opinion and discuss the topic. Ultimately, the will of the group is known, and we are able to move on with the decision. We will remember that our ultimate goal is to support student learning outcomes. And we, as board members, will participate in professional development opportunities because we also are a community of learners. And we will share our knowledge when we come back from these learning opportunities to grow our collective understanding. So I certainly think there's time this year as we enter into our strategic planning with Michelle and do our workshops to kind of take a look at those again and have some good discussion. But just throwing that out there. Craig, do you have anything to report?
I'm good. We've got a number of positions that we're going to talk about in closed session, and then we will then go into closed session. One of our candidates that we'll be discussing is Sarah Command.
Yep.
Right?
Yes.
K-M-A-N. And thanks for coming and joining us. But we'll get to that later on in the meeting.
Great. All right, district business, finance. Do I have a motion to approve the Go Right Way transportation proposal for the 2024-2025 school year through the 2028-2029 school year?
So moved.
Second.
All right, discussion.
Dylan, I have a number of questions that you reached out.
Yeah.
I sent these to Greg and Derek. I think I've got an overview here, but make sure I hit on these. And they're good questions. The specific parts of the cost will vary, decrease year to year. Question mark, only CPI and gas. And that's a question that specifically I had with Greg. How does this change from year to year in terms of price? It's CPI, and that's in the contract, plus 1%. So if CPI is 4%, it's 5%. And gas, there are some variables that go into there. Not knowing, you know, what type of crisis we see across the country or even our world, how that could impact that. You have another question as it relates to double runs. Does this lock fixed costs in? And then a second one, follow-up. If we were, how does this, oh, that's summer school, excuse me. We went from single runs to double runs two years ago. At that time, Jordan met with Go Right Way. They decreased the cost, or they increased the cost by, I want to say $50 per run across the board. And the simple math, if it was comparing that budget to this budget, it would decrease the run by $50. However, this is two, three years later, so there'll be variables that would be considered. But no, we're not locked into a double run. If we like to change that, there would be a change in the contract because there simply would be less buses on the road for fewer miles, which is labor, cost, and as well as fuel and maintenance. And then there was a question regarding summer trips, field trips, and sports being factored in. That's a part of it. I don't know if specifically you have a clear question in that if you guys could answer that. But sports and activities and special runs are billed up separately because from year to year, we have an idea of how many we have. But we don't have an exact number until the end of the year. So even with athletics, we can assume we have this. But there are sometimes cancellations. Sometimes there's additions, yada, yada, yada.
Yeah, so just the quote that they delivered to us is the stuff we know for sure is going to happen, the routes and the education days, essentially. Right, transportation days?
Correct.
And, sorry.
You can assume about $50,000 additional for co-curricular trips, athletics, and field trips.
Okay. Our base salary, or our base contract proposal was actually less.
Yeah, yeah.
Which was like, okay, let's look into that. And of course, that's coming on the heels of COVID, which changed a lot of things. So I don't know if that's a good comparison or not.
Sure. Well, it makes, sorry, Craig.
Well, I was just going to say there's about a $6 an hour increase in the hourly rate for the field trips and co-curriculars. And, you know, that's just the way of the world right now when it comes to labor. So there, you got that. But then on the roadside of it, there was a decrease and a decrease in the actual cost per mile. So, you know, hopefully that all pans out next year with, you know, hopefully no increase. But we'll just have to wait and see how everything shakes out here.
We had to, this year, hire out the motor coach, the extracurriculars, due to the labor shortage in bus drivers. So is there any talk about, because I understand Go Right Way has their own motor coach division? So is there any type of contracted negotiation that can happen due to them being our contracted buster versus having to go?
There certainly is. And that will have to be, you know, looked at, I think, as an individual issue. In general, but this year, it was a matter of where are the location of the buses? And so we went with a different company. And common sense of why won't we be going with the same company? Because they offer that. But they don't necessarily offer that here. And so then that has to be talked about more in advance so they can get those buses here. Even when we share buses, I mean, this is how difficult it is. We might need an additional bus because we have a shortage for co-curricular. Go Right Way might be bringing that bus from Cambridge early to pick up our kids to go back to Cambridge, drop off our track tape. But they're there so early because that bus has to go to pick the kids up from Cambridge. Meanwhile, the kids are sitting in a classroom. And so there's more time on a class. And then they bring the kids after they take their drop off, they bring that, those kids back. Here's just an example of complicated this stuff is. And we want to eliminate that. That's where we said, let's go get a coach bus. Let's, you know, we don't need, we can't be pulling kids out of school that long. And it's, and then there's supervision issues when we get there. Are our coaches there yet? But knowing that Go Right Way does offer that service as well, that's something we'll inquire on prior to the beginning of the year. We already have inquired on that. That said, they're interested in having a long-term relationship with us. This is a five-year contract. They're interested in a long term, which would extend well beyond that. At this point, I said, wait a minute, that's a huge commitment. We really need to, you know, be smart about where we're at. I don't like to tie the hands of the future administration or the hands of the future board. But long-term contracts typically financially are good for schools. However, it's a long-term contract, and they're more challenging if things aren't working all well. So that's something that, you know, you'll have to start looking at or continue to look at as a board.
Interesting. Any other questions?
Dylan, one thing on kind of that question about coach buses. In their contract, they've upped their kind of minimum trip charge. So if an athletic event or co-curricular, like interferes with the AM or PM routes, they've upped that rate by about $55. So they're really trying to discourage that. Or kind of, not, that's the cost of them having to bring in an additional driver that isn't one of their route drivers to kind of come and service that need.
Yeah, I think, what a setup. Thank you, Derek. I think that's, that makes sense. You know, I mean, it's pretty impressive that they were able to get that core contract down, which I think speaks to their ability as a company. And I think that's reassuring. But, I mean, anybody will hear that that's the most expensive part is the trips or the unplanned parts that happen. So I just was asking those questions. I've had the opportunity to go to the PTO meetings a lot for the elementary. A big role that they play at the elementary is to try and fully fund, right, Dale, correct me if I'm wrong, fully fund field trips for all the students to make sure there's that inclusion aspect of all students can go on these field trips. And it was another $55 charge. I know a lot of those field trips might hit that minimum and not be, you know, that other amount. It was like a 30% increase or something on that minimum fee. So just so that we are knowledgeable about how much work the PTO does all year to make those field trips happen. This is going to be a big hit to them. And again, it's not like nobody's trying to stop that price increase. I know that Go Right Way is. But just for us to keep that in mind, I think that those field trips are pretty important for the elementary. So if we remember that going into the next year for the PTO, they were really hard. And I wouldn't be opposed to helping them from this level, but.
Yeah, they budget about $6 a year, just on field trips.
Absolutely. I know we've, the conversation's predated you about how important the off-campus opportunities for kids are. And they kind of laxed during COVID, and so even right after. It's like, no, we have to go back to the traditions and everything because those make a big, they are a big deal to our kiddos and whatnot. So, yes, good point, but we'll find a way. And I think it's good context, too, coming off of some of the referendum talk where this is easily a portion of the budget that people can say, well, here, I just saved you so much money. Do what's cheaper, save some money. But there are so many other variables and logistics that go into play. And at the end of the day, what's best for students? And they're at the center of it. And it's a lot more conversation than just what's cheapest and saves money. So a lot of work was done, so thank you, Greg and Derek, and your work with Go Right Way on this. And the challenges will continue, I'm sure. Any other questions? Great questions.
Thanks for answering them. I think I sent them Saturday night, so I appreciate it.
Well, none of that can be too automatic. I forget his last name, and how I think it is. He was very good about getting those answers back to us. I went to talk to him this morning. So I appreciate his efforts to.
Great. All right, hearing done, Cindy?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. All right, moving on. 8.1, there is a change to 8.1. We are going to be motioning to approve six open enroll requests. One in particular request is still in review. And so if necessary, it will be brought back at a later time. But for now, I'll take a motion to approve six open enroll requests for the 2024-2025 school year.
So moved. Second.
Questions? Okay, hearing done, Cindy?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yep.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. 8.2, do I have a motion to deny six open enroll requests for the 2024-2025 school year?
So moved. Second.
These are unfortunately, it's the 4K issue where we closed our 4K enrollment in terms of open enrollment back in, what, February under that annually. This is a discussion that needs to be tied into 4K in general as you move forward. You know, we don't want to, we don't want to have to deny this. That was part of the reason the district looked at this was potentially growing enrollment, you know, for a number of reasons. But one, to grow enrollment for our district. However, it goes back to our numbers currently. Where our classes are overloaded. And so we don't know our exact numbers yet next year. But if we're, if we have 18 in a class, 4K where we want 15, and we bring students in from other communities, you're continuing to stress that classroom. Is that fair to our community? And then you get to the point where, well, okay, let's bring them in hoping it can create another section. But you get a breakpoint where you're overloaded, and now you can't justify it, so you have to hire another staff. But now you're upside down again, and the numbers don't work out, and you're continuing to pay more for a program. It's really a difficult situation. So we'll contact these parents, and hopefully these are situations where they understand and say, you know, we're coming back next year. we're coming back next year, some of our kids, kiddos, uh, it might be a sibling. And then we want them to come and hopefully they come as kindergartners. However, some of these students are open enrolling here to get the whole day experience and they're going back to their communities. So there is a balance there, but right now we don't have a choice, we have to deny them because that's what we stated and approved in February.
I have a provocative question if I can ask you, the whole sibling thing. Because to me, I, I totally understand, especially for folks who are then going to have their kids come for us at 4K and then to another district after that, you know, that that's, seems unfair to our community, right? If they have a sibling in the district already and as a family, they have shown that type of commitment as a whole enroll family, um, then it seems, seems less logical for us to deny that kiddo the 4K spot, knowing, you know, potentially maybe they'll go somewhere else for a bit and then never come to our district, right? So I feel, to me, it seems like it's, uh, showing a good faith from the family of, well, they have older siblings in the district, so you know that this kid's gonna stay with you longer if they get in 4K. And it also sort of makes budgetary sense, so I'm wondering why we should still, you know, have policy.
I have a, I have a provocative argument.
Yeah.
Um, that it's, you know, again, what he was saying is you have families that live in the community that pay the taxes that are here already. And if it's putting stress on the, on the system, you make the argument, if you wholeheartedly want to send your kids here, then you move into the district. And so you're, you're, you're again weighing that, yes, um, you know, you have a sibling, you're open enrolling, you're showing your faith that you want your education here, but at the same time, if it's putting the stress, um, it's that fine balance of if you, you know, right, like.
Dale, we've had a lot of conversations administratively about this, there are real.
Those kids out, right, like the next year you could up and pull that sibling out and go back to your community.
Well, we, we, if, if it's a second grade student that's already here, the sibling, you know, we don't want to lose that second grade student either.
But they could potentially do that.
They could, absolutely, at any given time. Uh, we have had a lot of talk about this and we need to continue, I mean, we've called DPI. I don't know, Dale, help me out here, if we have a specific answer to whether or not we can revisit this later on, depending on what our enrollments are.
Yeah, I don't have, I didn't get the answer quite yet, but I think we're stuck for this coming to school year.
I believe we are, and.
There, there may be, cause I've asked the question, you know, can you have like preference for siblings? It would take an additional board policy, um, but we're, it's a little confusing in there cause we get a, I get a maybe or a yes and then I get a no.
Yeah.
So, um, Craig's gonna touch base with the attorneys and just try to see what we can do.
The other thing is, is what about if it's a staff, like where do you draw the line of making, you know?
And, and when you have, you know, right now there, there's three, three 4Kers that have siblings open and roll day, but.
And the smaller the district, the more challenging, the larger there's just more sections to move students around. Um, but it's, it's a tough, it's a tough situation because I, I still believe that first and foremost, we have to, uh, we have to look at our taxpayers. And if I'm a parent, and, and this is anywhere, and I'm paying, and, and this year was stressed in 4K. You know, we had, we had our hands full and now we have to explain to our parents why we're bringing in students when we're full. And I ask the parent and say, you're gonna hire more help then? And so it's really, uh, it's with, and even prior to 4K, it's the issue of, you know, you want twenty-two kids in a classroom, you have forty-four, and I got forty-eight, fifty, at what point in time do you say, we have to hire an additional staff member? And then you're upside down, now you're hoping you get another fifteen kids, so you fill that up because you get the state aid that goes, that goes with that. So I think it's a counter, good questions, we've struggled and had conversations for months on the same topic and we just hit a dead, a dead-end wall with the same, same issues that we don't have solutions to. But it really does tie into the larger picture with all the 4K kind of issues.
Can I, I think, clarifying question, quick, just about, cause 4K is a point four FTE or?
Point five, we do point six, we get point six, uh, because we add the outreach hours to that, so.
And that's why usually open enroll in makes sense for our community, cause you get the one point.
For, for, for kindergarten through twelve, you get a one F, you get one FTE, um, um, reimbursement versus 4K. Because we do the outreach, it's point six, so point force needs to be supplemented from the current budget. And therein lies the issue of bringing students in from outside, taxing our system.
Yeah.
You know, kindergarten through, we don't have any other classes that we capped. I don't believe, you know, we can sprinkle a, you know, a couple, two, three, third graders, sixth graders and we, and they'll, we can embed those uh, without taxing the system, and now we're getting added at a one FTE. But the 4Kers tax our program and we don't even, we only get point six.
Can I have in there? When somebody open enrolls in, their resident district gets the FTE and the state aid and a lot of that. We actually get a payment from that other district, so they actually have to cut a check, in theory, cut a check from them to us for that one student. So it's basically.
They're still making, they're still getting added on a student they don't even have. They get to keep part of it and we get to keep part of it. The same with ours that goes somewhere else, it's a complicated system.
So they're not actually culminated by us, they're in ours kind of enrollment, but then we back them up to say they're not ours that we're kind of financially responsible for. To make it even more confusing.
And these are all really good points of conversation, I think we just need to do a deep dive and we intend to, um, for Dale to share, um, more information. We can't make decisions without all the information, we haven't even brought up the, the tax and the stress on, um, our teachers and staff and the whole logistical operations of specials and scheduling, you know, so there's a lot more to it, so, um.
Dylan, but I think one thing also is that how the system's set up is you have to set a cap, a number cap, and then after you set your cap, then you can delineate preference. You can't actually delineate preference before the cap, so you have to set the cap of a number first. And then if there's any preference, it comes after, the board can decide or not, but that number cap comes first, which is why I don't believe we can do any of the stuff you're asking about.
Right.
When we change.
Or unless a law changes.
Right?
Well, which open enrollment, it's changed considerably over the years.
Any other questions? All right, hearing done Cindy, yes, Mary Beth, yes, Mike, Matt, Dylan, yes, Angie, yes, I vote yes as well. Um, do I have a motion to combine nine point one and nine point three?
So.
Thanks Nicole for everything she's given to the district and welcome Alyssa and Ashley to the team. Any questions on those positions? All right, hearing done Cindy, yes, Mary Beth, yes, Mike, yes, Matt, Dylan, yes, Angie, yes, I vote yes as well. Uh, ten point one, do I have a motion to approve the boys and girls track co-op applications?
So.
Second.
Try to slip in there.
Just another nod to our co-op opportunity and great that you've been doing efforts. Opportunities, so Cindy, Mary Beth, yes, Mike, yes, Matt, Dylan, yes, Cindy? I mean Angie. I see Angie, you vote yes.
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, eleven point one, future meeting minutes, just, or meeting dates, um, Monday, May twenty-seventh, we will not have a meeting, obviously. It is Memorial Day and then I'm working on workshop dates, I have everybody's summer plans and we're just cross tabulating, I have a couple days I work there, so we will get those established. And otherwise, we will roll call to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight one, point eight five. Hearing one, hearing C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. When the executive session is over, the board will reconvene into open session. Cindy, by team, Mary Beth Shaw, Barb Stotts, yes, Matt Wedner, Matt Crow, Dylan Hollins, and I'm here as well. Okay, we'll take one.